Two o'clock session of Roanoke City Council for August the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Mrs. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch? Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. And of course, Mr. President, Councilman Best Pitch will not be with us today for either two o'clock or seven o'clock session. All right, today we're pleased to have the Reverend Ben Brannan, Associate Pastor of Youth, Second Presbyterian Church. Pastor Brannan, are you, come on down, sir, and following his invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, Pastor. You please stand.
And I will say, as a new Roanoker, or a new member of this city, I'm pleased to be here with you today, so let us pray. "You give life to all things, O God, and all things find life in you. For this life and for the calling on each of our lives that have brought us together this day, we give you thanks. By your example and throughout history, we have seen the power of words. You spoke words of creation to the emptiness of space, and order came from chaos. You spoke, and the light was divided from the darkness. By your words, you tamed them and put each in the motion of time. You spoke to the waters of creation, and they separated from the dry land, and life emerged and began to flourish. Speaking life into the dust of the earth, you created us in your image, put us beside one another to live and work, empowered us to nurture your creation, to tend to your world and all that is in it, to be the hands and feet of your divine compassion and grace. God of creation, you taught us words are powerful. So as we go about the business of this meeting, may the words we speak today be sown together with love. May the words we hear today fall on our hearts with power and conviction, and may the words we put into action embody your mercy toward our neighbor. Remind us that in our brokenness, we are called to serve with imagination, creativity, and love. In the name of the Son who calls us all beloved. Amen."
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. And welcome to Roanoke. You probably put us over a hundred thousand miles, citizen, thank you. All right, we like to have a little levity down here every now and then, but thank you. Today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel Three, on Thursday, August nineteenth at seven o'clock PM, and Saturday, August the twenty-first at four o'clock PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Our announcements for today, the Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. The Architectural Review Board, one vacancy. Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, one vacancy. Roanoke Civic Center Commission, three vacancies. Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee, one vacancy. Tour and Advisory Board, one vacancy, which is a citizen-at-large. And for any of these vacancies, we encourage you to either go online, to complete an application, or contact the Clerk's Office, and they will walk you through that process. But we, as a council, will always interested and really want citizens to come forward to help us govern our city through boards and commissions. So that's very important to us, and we appreciate any applications that come forward. So please take advantage of that. We have vacancies, and we need to fill them, so it's an easy process, and there are several ways, at least two ways, that you can do that. All right, now we're down to item number two, which is Presentations and Acknowledgement. And we have, first, a proclamation declaring Monday, August sixteenth, as Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors Day. And I'm going to ask Walter Gru and to join me down at the lower podium. And anyone that you want to come with you. All right, good to see you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good to see you. How you doing?
Good to see you.
Are you doing well?
Okay, good.
All right. Whereas the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors, the largest trade association in the Roanoke Valley, is celebrating its one-hundredth anniversary in two thousand and twenty-one. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Whereas the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors is recognized by the National Association of Realtors as being chartered on April twenty-seventh, nineteen twenty-one, originally as a Roanoke Real Estate Board. Whereas, beginning with just twenty-five firms representing the city of Roanoke, the Roanoke Valley Association, excuse me, the Roanoke Valley Association is currently comprised of more than one hundred and forty firms, representing more than one thousand four hundred and eighty Realtors members, and more than two hundred and eighty-five affiliate company members. The association is one of the twenty-eight local associations that comprise the Virginia Realtors. Whereas W.C. Turner served as the first president of the Roanoke Real Estate Board in nineteen twenty-one. Jim Nugger served as president of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors in nineteen seventy-four, and is still active with over fifty years of real estate service. That's tremendous. Ten past presidents have also served in the role as president of Virginia Realtors, starting with Charles A. Ball in nineteen twenty-five. Whereas Dennis Crunk served as president of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors in nineteen eighty-four, went on to serve as president in two thousand and oh-six, and Walter Gru, the two thousand and twenty-one president, and Laura Benjamin, who has served the association for thirty years, as the chief executive officer, both served the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors during the association's centennial year. Whereas the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors recognizes that homeownership is key to the American dream, and works to make that dream accessible to all, and advocates, promotes, and supports policies for a stronger, robust economy and quality of life throughout the Roanoke region, and the principles of fair housing for all. Whereas members of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors are held to a high ethical standard, and adhere to the Realtors' Code of Ethics, and provide exceptional value and service to its members, helps to advance the real estate industry, and empowers Realtors to impact the industry through advocacy, community engagement, and training and professional resources. Whereas the members of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors are major contributors to the area economy, facilitating well over one point eight billion annually in residential and commercial real estate transactions on behalf of buyers and sellers. And community outreach is central to the association's mission, and is dedicated to providing support for charitable organizations in the Roanoke Valley. And whereas the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors will commemorate its centennial year with special programs and events throughout two thousand and twenty-one. Now, therefore, I, Sherman P. Lee, Senior, Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, bestow our congratulations and celebrate the contributions of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors on this historic occasion, and extend our appreciation to the many achievements and service to the citizens of the city of Roanoke, and do hereby proclaim August sixteenth throughout this great seven-time All-American City as Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors Day. Thank you all.
Thank you. On behalf of the Roanoke Valley Association of Realtors membership, I would just like to thank the City Council and Mayor Lee for recognizing us. We really do strive to have a positive impact across the valley as a whole, and we do strive to include all of our citizens and provide fair housing for everyone, educate the citizenry as to how to become homeowners, because, as it said in the proclamation, homeownership is a key part of the American dream. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's great recognition, great work in our community. All right, I want to ask Mr. Dan Smith to join me here at the podium. And also join me will be Vice Mayor Trish White Boyd. Dan?
How are you doing? Good to see you. Welcome. Been reading about you all weekend.
Yeah, I'm going to use my big print.
Okay.
I'm going to take off my mask, so I can read better. This is certainly with great pleasure and an honor to read this proclamation for my friend, Dan Smith. He is quite accomplished, so sit back, cross your legs. I plan to read it in its entirety. Oh dear. Whereas, Dan Smith was born on July thirty-one, nineteen forty-six, in Asheville, North Carolina, resides in northwest Roanoke, is the proud father of two adult children, and grandfather of two. He completed high school in rural North Carolina, and attended University of North Carolina at Asheville. Whereas, Mr. Smith began work as a sportswriter at the Asheville Citizen on August twenty-two, nineteen sixty-four, advanced to sports editor of the Asheville Times in nineteen sixty-six, was recruited by Bill Brill, sports editor of the Roanoke Times, and began work on August twenty-two, nineteen seventy-one, and remained in sports until nineteen seventy-eight, moving into the Features Department of the Times, and won the Marshall Johnson Associated Press Award in nineteen seventy-two, a career accomplishment award at the age of only twenty-six. Whereas, Dan left the Roanoke Times in nineteen eighty-one and became editor of the Vinton Messenger, he was later editor of the Fincastle Herald, the Newcastle Record, the Salem Times Register, all a part of Salem Publishing. He was recruited to the editor of the Blue Ridge Business Journal in its second month of publication in nineteen ninety-one, and remained there until two thousand and eight. The publication was purchased by the Roanoke Times and General Manager Tom Thiel, and founded by Valley Business Front Magazine in two thousand and eight. He was with the publication for four years, selling his interest to Mr. Thiel in order to finish his first novel, Clog. Whereas, Dan became a freelance magazine writer at a point, and also wrote his second novel and eighth book, News, to be published by Perpetuous Press in summer of twenty-two. So that's coming up. Dan was a two thousand and ten inductee into the Virginia Communications Hall of Fame, and was named the two thousand and five Virginia Business Journalist of the Year. He was selected a Gold Award by the Virginia Roanoker Magazine, and at the Valley's Best Writer in two thousand and ten. And Dan's blog was named a Gold Award winner in two thousand and ten, twenty-eleven, and his Roanoker story, The Ballad of Miss Kay, won an International Magazine Award in two thousand and eleven. Wow. Whereas, Dan has won Press Association Awards in every significant journalist discipline, news, sports, editorial, feature writing, photography, list goes on and on, and won additional awards for Business Ethics, BBB, Environmental Education, Clean Valley Council two thousand and three, Environmental Journalism, and Support of the Arts Council of the Blue Ridge, and the first two thousand and four Perry F. Kingdick Literary Award. He has been an award-winning contributor to the WVTF Public Radio Essay Series, winning two Virginia Broadcasters Award for those editorials. Whereas, Dan is the founder of the Roanoke Regional Writers Conference in two thousand and eight, directed it for eleven years, and remains director emeritus, and was the organizer of the two thousand and eleven Women's Forum at Hollins University. And whereas, during his fifty years in Roanoke, he has taught as a guest lecturer at nearly every college and university within one hundred miles, and has contributed to the Roanoke Times, the Roanoker Magazine, WVTF, the Vinton Messenger, the Fincastle Herald, Blue Ridge Country, Retired Virginia, Vinton Magazine, Roanoke Valley Magazine, the Salem Times Register, the Newcastle Record, Virginia Living, USA Today, The Washington Post, and various other publications. Now, therefore, I, Trish White Boyd, Vice Mayor of the City of Roanoke, on behalf of our mayor, Sherman P. Lee, Senior, do hereby recognize the many, 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 many accomplishments and contributions of this Roanoke journalist, celebrate fifty years of exemplary journalism, and proclaim August sixteenth throughout this great seven-time All-America City as Dan Smith Day. Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
Well, I had to stand up here having to apologize for the length of that thing. Casey Stengel, when he was inducted into the Hall of Fame, famously said, if you hang around long enough, they can't ignore you any longer. I'm not going to drag this out, because you've already gone to sleep twice. Let me take just a minute to thank all the legitimate journalists who've been parts of this fifty-year ride. You're my heroes, and your contribution to our city have been profound. Don't give up on the press because it's under attack. It's always been under attack. But never has the press been the enemy of the people or of the truth. Thank you for recognizing that. And thank you for this. This is, this is special. Thank you, ma'am. Well, I can read the big print. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, congratulations. Thanks for the profound difference you've made, and how you continue to inspire people to write. It's really important.
Thank you, Joe.
Congratulations.
Dan, your family, friends, anybody here with you? Will they stand up and do you recognize that you don't care?
This is Judy Dickerson, she's my grandchildren's grandmother on the other side. This is my, my sweet, Lethy Kaye Sevens, who is an accomplished novelist and her own rights. And this is, this is Susan Crotto, my publicist.
Thank y'all again.
And I thought Mr. Jeffrey wanted to say something.
Yes, sir.
I just want to congratulate you for the years of service, especially serving in the world of journalism. Being a magazine owner myself, I understand all the trials and tribulations that you've been going through the past fifty years, so continued success and well deserved. Thank you, sir.
One of the trials and tribulations not mentioned in here is I got fired by the Roanoke Times at one point.
No comment on that. But congratulations, sir.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith. Congratulate.
At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Stephanie Moon Reynolds to come forward and recognize some very, very special people here in the city. And I want to call on Amelia Merchant, Director of Finance and Staff, to join us here at the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Give you a little bit of background on this presentation that's going to be presented from the GFOA to the Department of Finance for their FY two thousand and twenty-one budget. The award represents a significant achievement by the city of Roanoke. Got too many glasses on here. Get the reading ones on here. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principle of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, excuse me, Roanoke had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well Roanoke's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, a communications device. Budget documents must be rated, quote, proficient in all four categories, and in the fourteen mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. When a distinguished budget presentation award is granted to an entity, a certificate of recognition for budget presentation is also presented to the individual or department designated as being primarily responsible for having achieved the award. This has been presented to the City of Roanoke Department of Finance. There are over sixteen hundred participants in the Budget Awards Program. The most recent budget award recipients, along with their corresponding budget documents, are posted quarterly on GFOA's website. Award recipients have pioneered efforts to improve the quality of budgeting and provide an excellent example for other governments throughout North America. So I say congratulations, and I'm pleased to present this award to the Finance Department for FY two thousand and twenty-one budget this year.
Thank you very much. This is, this is an award that we have received for a good number of years now, and it's something that we take great pride in. This is actually the thirty-sixth year that the city has received this award. And the amazing thing about that is that only forty other localities in both the United States and Canada can set that they have received it for that many times in a row. So we are thrilled to have received it one more time, but I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize all those who've also helped with this document to pull it together. So we have our folks over here in the Division of Management Budget, as well as our Director, Amelia Merchant. She is the guiding light that leads the way in our department. Next, we have Lauren Fennell, and she is new to the Division of Management Budget. She is our Budget Business Analyst. Next, we have Katie Davis, who is also a Budget Business Analyst, and has been with us for a good number of years now. And then we have Ian Haw, who also joined us this year, was once with the city before, and we're pleased to have her back again. So one person who's not with us here today is Leisha Van Buren, so she's taking a well-deserved vacation day, and she is also the glue that holds the department together and puts, helps us put this document together, which I've brought a prop so that you can all see exactly how big this thing is. It's just shy of five hundred pages, so I do not recommend printing it off, but if you want to take a look at it, you can come and view it in our department, or the city manager has a copy, or the main library has a copy as well. Some of the important things to note, other than this is our thirty-sixth time receiving this award, is there's also a special recognition that certain localities will receive for their budget document, and one is for performance measures, and then the second is for their capital presentation within their document. And so if a locality receives a certain level of outstanding votes for their document, they also receive this special recognition. So this is the first time that our budget document has received one of those very distinguished special recognitions for our performance measures. So only thirty-nine other localities, again, in the United States and Canada, received this award in two thousand and twenty. So we are very pleased to finally reach that designation here at the city. And I'll say that many budget directors or finance directors will set it as one of their retirement goals to receive that designation, but I can assure you, none of us are planning on retiring next year, so we will still be around. But again, we are just very thrilled to have received this award again one more year.
Member of council, any comments or thoughts?
That's fantastic, and thank you for explaining the, some of the process and why this is so important. You all do incredible work, and to receive, to be one of only thirty-nine localities to receive this designation is extraordinary. Well done.
Thank you.
Because, congratulations, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Outstanding job, and remember, financing and budgeting is dear to our hearts, so thank you for what you're doing.
Well said, Mayor.
And Mayor, even though you don't want to talk, thank you for the work that you do and effort you make, and throughout all of this, and coming to us in our budgets and meetings, and... meetings and the work that you do. We appreciate you, all right, as we do all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And it's always good to hear of our special recognition that we get from the city and so that's why we're so proud of all of our staff here and the work that's done here at City Hall. So, I appreciate that and thank you, Mr. Cobb, for your guidance and work with the staff there on finance and budgets. All right. We'll move down to the next item, which is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City Council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, recommendation or report to the council. Madam Clerk, do I have anybody that signed up?
Yes, we have one speaker.
All right.
David Garland.
All right. Ms. Garland. And you have five minutes.
All right, Mayor, members of council. My name is David Garland. I live in northwest Roanoke City. Shared concerns with Councilman Cobb a couple of days ago about a recent, the recent computer data deletions and received his and city attorney's replies. Thank you both. I do have just a few points to present briefly along with that. Reminded of a scene in the 1971 film Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory when the kid and their parents are crowded in through a door from Wonka's office into a small cramped room full of discomfort, only to find that the only escape is the door through which they had just come and yet when opened, it leads into entirely, an entirely different hallway that they've never seen. And the father of one child says, what is this, Wonka? Some sort of fun house? To which Wonka replies, why? Having fun? So, instead of coming here to say, I told you so, I'll say, are you having fun? When obviously here on July 19th, I proposed that due to charges of embezzlement against Councilman Robert Jeffrey Jr. involving a local community organization, he should step aside or take a leave of absence or be privately counseled to do so, or that council otherwise takes steps to, and I quote from a prior remark, to prevent use or even the appearance of the use of his council power to impact investigation. And council's reaction to the charges was essentially deadpan, centered on whether they involved council work and whether state law required any sort of action. A tacit commitment to business as usual. And according to a Roanoke Times article, city manager Bob Cowal scoffed at any concern about Jeffrey's ongoing role, that it was misplaced because only the council can act together on the city's behalf. And it would quickly learn that was not true because barely two weeks later, Roanoke City Police were sending search warrants to the Apple Corporation to obtain user data that had been intentionally deleted entirely from a council-owned iPad computer that had been previously issued to Mr. Jeffrey for his use as councilman. Apparently, after his council computer was seized in connection with the police investigation, the user data on it was remotely erased. The city's own IT staff stated to police that Mr. Jeffrey was the sole administrator of the iPad and the sole person with the capacity to delete the data, apparently without a council vote. This was all reported in the Roanoke Times. Now, this is a new matter, not, and this is not unrelated to council's work. It involves the likely deletion of public records on the city's computer for no good reason, that's been stated. A variety of council records, correspondence or records subject to freedom of information laws, may have been deleted along with whatever it was that someone did not want police to see. And regardless of how one views the embezzlement charges and the destruction of city records and potentially an obstruction of justice by doing so, is council-related and the council's problem. My understanding is that apart from any sort of obstruction charge, there are specific criminal charges available under Virginia law when a public official intentionally destroys public records for improper purposes. Section 18.2472 of the Code, for instance, provides that if a public officer fraudulently destroys records in his keeping, belonging to his office, it is a Class 1 misdemeanor carrying a prohibition on holding office. Virginia Public Records Act, Section 42.188, also makes it a misdemeanor to fail to preserve public records and properly transfer them when leaving office. Today, I request that city council conduct an internal investigation of this matter to determine what happened, who did it, whether any state or local laws or IT rules have been violated, whether any public records were either permanently lost or require restoration from other sources, and what might be done to prevent something similar in the future. I also ask that upon, once completed, the findings be shared publicly. And in the event public records were deleted for impersonal purposes or for personal purposes, you're asked to support appropriate charges as the victimized entity. Some of you complained that victims or witnesses of shootings in the city did not speak up. Who among you is speaking up for the city if it is victimized? Now, the city attorney has shared that there is already a criminal investigation underway by Commonwealth Attorney's Office and has again suggested that council need not do anything right now. However, Commonwealth Attorney, the Commonwealth Attorney's scope is crimes, not data management, policy and reprimands. And they may be focused on obstruction rather than the public records question. Their work should not preclude the council from its own housekeeping now to understand what happened, identify and manage any loss of records, develop corrective measures, take action against those involved and so forth. And the council should cooperate with the Commonwealth Attorney, of course, and may benefit as well. For instance, perhaps data obtained by police from Apple contains copies of unique public records that can be restored to regular city records from the copy in police inventory. But let there be no confusion, whether or not the Commonwealth Attorney brings criminal charges, I do think council has a leadership obligation to try to get to the bottom of this in the city's best interest to manage public records and show partnership with its own law enforcement agency and to hold accountable whoever's involved. Thank you for your consideration. And I do have a copy for the clerk.
All right. That concludes all of the people who've signed up to speak today. We'll now move to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I want to call your attention to two requests for closed meetings from Vice Mayor Patricia White Boyd, Chair of the City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter, being the annual performance of the council-appointed officers pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. And from the city manager requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the disposition of real estate and consultation with legal counsel where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. I need a motion for this.
Move the consent agenda.
Second. All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. We now move to item number six on our agenda, which is petitions and communications. A communication from the Commonwealth Attorney recommending acceptance of the Victim Witness Program grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services in accordance with the Virginia Crime Victim and Witness Rights Act. And a communication from the city manager concurring in the recommendation. First, there's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Victim Witness Grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right. Is there any discussion by members of council and I recognize, Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about this program and how it works and what this funding is supporting?
Yeah, I can provide a little bit of insight and then certainly would be able to provide more if needed in the future, but essentially, there are a couple of staff positions that are a result of this as well as they're supporting operational costs along with it. It's coordinated by the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and it includes a full-time coordinator as well as a full-time assistant based at the Circuit Court. And they are essentially there to assist those that are, again, come forward as witnesses and others in these types of cases. And it is an annual program or has been an annual program for years. There are some changes undergoing in the program as well that will potentially challenge some of the funding, I think, in the future. And we'll have more information about that, I think, as we get into the budget year, but that's just sort of the high-level overview. And again, I can provide more information if you wish at a later date.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the Victim Witness Program Grant, amending and re-erdaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or question by members of council?
I just had one question.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Cobb, I noticed that the total funding was only like $54,000, so we only have one coordinator for this program at this time?
There is only one in the program, yes.
Do we anticipate maybe getting a second one?
The program has historically been dependent upon the grant funding, so anything that goes beyond the grant funding, obviously, would be something that would be a part of the annual budgeting process.
Yeah, I noticed that. We had to put in the other. I was just wondering because it seems like we would have more than one coordinator for that program, something as important as that, but thank you for answering my question.
Sure.
All right. Any other comments, discussions, questions? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. And I will refer to our city manager to share with us on the briefings and introduce us to the briefings.
Thank you, Mayor and council. There is one briefing this afternoon and that is the annual update on our greenhouse gas emissions report. As the council, I think, is aware, we are one of the, of only a handful of communities in the state of Virginia that has really a climate action plan and specific targets for greenhouse gas emissions reductions. We've had that for a number of years and you may recall in the not-too-distant past, we actually renewed those targets, actually increasing the targets because we had been successful enough in the first period to actually exceed our original target and then reestablished those. This effort is a partnership between our Sustainability Outreach Coordinator, Nell Boyle, and Dr. Sean McGinnis, who's the Director of the Virginia Tech Green Engineering Program, as well as others that you'll hear about, I think, through this presentation. And what this annual presentation allows us to do is kind of check in and see how things are going. And we kind of do it in increments of four- or five-year sort of timeframes as to when we sort of reset those. And we're actually at that point where we need to consider kind of what are the next steps in this program and in this process. And I'm certain that Dr. McGinnis will refer to those as well as we go through. So, they're here to provide that information and then ultimately answer any questions that you might have as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to give Dr. McGinnis just a second. We have a presentation that's a live, online climate software that we were approached by by a company called Climate View from Sweden. And they looked across the country and were looking for a community to showcase their new product and for the first time in the United States, we'll show you a little bit of that today. So, we're really excited about that, but we need to use his computer just for some technical glitches we came across before we came on. So, he'll talk a little bit about the 2019 climate emissions report and then we'll talk about the urban heat island effect report that we had done last year. We have the results back from that and we'll talk a little bit about that and then he'll show you the new tool that we have. I'll leave it to Dr. McGinnis.
Thank you. Thank you, city council, Mayor Lee, city manager Cowal. My name is Sean McGinnis. I've been a resident of the city for approximately 25 years and I've been doing this emissions inventory and outreach work for the city for about 15 years. For those of you who aren't familiar with climate change and some of the issues, I won't give a long background, but I'll just say that the graph on the left from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration shows that climate, carbon dioxide and greenhouse gases continue to rise. The fourth National Climate Assessment basically says that while cities and communities and the government are making progress, that progress is not enough and that if we don't move more quickly and more aggressively, that this will threaten the health and the well-being of the American people, particularly populations that are vulnerable. We've got a lot of slides here. I'll go through them fairly quickly, but there are, you have a copy of this and there are notes on the bottom and links that you can do a little bit of extra research if you'd like to. Timely enough, the International Panel for Climate Change just published its latest report, the sixth one. It came out last week. I don't want to spend a lot of time. This is a hundreds-of-page report, but here are the five key things. It is now unequivocal that human influence is warming the planet. The science is getting better and more precise, so we know better how much this is happening. If we do nothing at all, we're still stuck with at least 30 years of warming, just the way the physics works in the atmosphere. So, we are locked into 30 years, no matter what we do. The climate is changing more quickly and it's accelerating, but, and this is the part that we're going to focus on today, there's still a short window where we could make changes and mitigate these problems. Okay? But this work requires, and these are the words directly from the panel and the summary from the New York Times, "This requires a mammoth and expensive undertaking, a level of political will that most governments have so far been unable to muster." Now, as a city, as you heard, we have done a great job and are leading the pack in Virginia and to some degrees across the nation, but there is more to be done. So, this is what the Climate Explorer predicts to change specifically in Roanoke. Often, we hear about this at the global level, but in Roanoke, you can see that we have a slight increase in temperature from 2013 to 2019, but by 2100, we're looking at eight to 10 degrees on average more temperature. But with intervention, we can drop that down to just a couple of degrees. This will change heat. This will change flooding. This will change environmental impact and although people don't think about this because tornadoes and floods and other things get the news, heat injures more people than all other natural disasters combined. And they're interrelated. Now, bringing this down to a very local level, because that's still kind of a high picture, we did an urban heat study with some folks in Richmond. On the left-hand side, you can see some tracks where we had volunteers from the city either drive their car or ride their bike around with sensitive temperature gauges on. And we did an urban heat map and you can see on the left, three example pictures of the heat with the darkest orange being the hottest and the blue being the least hot. And you can see, for example, in the lower right, the big blue area there is Mill Mountain, which is cool, and the center of the city is the hottest. And if you look really carefully, you look, you can look in the middle one, the afternoon one, and think that something weird is going to happen and it's because we had a rainstorm right in the middle of trying to collect this data. And it rained only on half the city. So, you can see that southwest county is a little bit hotter there, the southwest side of the city and not. But you can see, we not. But you can see, we have a urban heat effect like all cities. And the takeaway from this is that buildings, roads, especially low-income areas that have less urban cover, smaller tree canopy, less new development, these are the areas that bear the brunt of this. And you can use this data, and we have a very complete report. This is just a snapshot to bring this climate stuff into city level for you to think about. You can use this to identify social vulnerability areas, think about how to allocate resources, and to try to minimize the effects overall, but also, you know, target the folks who are going to be affected the most by this. So, you know, one of the policies is growing shade. The trees make a huge difference, and not just for their heat, hurt urban heat island, but you also get air quality benefits. You know, prices of houses go up, neighborhoods are more pleasant. All of that kind of goes together. So this is kind of a local effect, and it's an example of the kinds of things that can be done. Now, as we've said, this is a timeline. This report started in 2007. First city council resolution was in 2006. We had a second resolution in 2008 to hit 10% community reduction. And in the last 15 years, there have been action plans, implementation of those plans, and monitoring and verifying of the reports. And every year, or every other year, I come up and give this report. We exceeded the first targets, which were, we had a 13% reduction in the community. That's the whole city. And in the municipality, the things that you have control of, buildings, fleet, fire, libraries, schools, we had a 25% reduction. So those are huge benefits. This was redone, and then from 2015 to 2019, we hit the targets again. Another 10% overall reduction, another 12.5% municipal reduction. And we set some new targets in 2019, another target of 10% and 12.5%. So those all compound against each other. And that current target is currently through December of 2024. So I'm going to tell you where we are now, and then I'm going to make some recommendations for going forward. This includes the whole city, electricity, natural gas, transportation, fuels, waste. We had to adjust the baseline. The baseline used to be much earlier, 2005. But the way American Electric Power provides this data, we had to make a little bit of an adjustment of the baseline year. We get data from the utilities, from VDOT, from the city's energy and fuel records. And the key piece is, this is looking backwards. What have we done in the past, and how are we meeting goals that we've set? We have a software package called ClearPath that we've been using since 2015. Here are some of the commitments. I've just highlighted those. One thing to note that was not mentioned there is, we are part of something called the Better Building Challenge, which is a city-based program, just based on square footage within the city. And we hit a 23% municipal reduction in 2018 for a million square feet of core city buildings. And we met the Department of Energy target three years early. So this is a huge win for the city, based on all of the good efforts done by city staff in retrofitting buildings, buying more energy-efficient equipment, having good policies and following them. We also encourage citizens to do things by giving them an abatement on their real estate tax if they put solar in. And if they put energy efficiency in above a certain baseline level, they get a reduction in energy taxes as well. So that's, the city properties, you guys have control over what happens there. At the community, you kind of have to incentivize all of our constituents to do the right thing. And as you heard, we have a climate action plan and summary, which is rare for cities in Virginia. We're one of only a handful that actually has a whole document that talks about these results and what we're going to do with them. Lots of community outreach. These are the programs we've done over the years. I won't go through all of those. I will mention the Green Citizens Academy, which we hold yearly. Some years, we've had two of those. We've done that for the past 10 years, where we invite citizens to come in, and we explain to them what the city's doing and what they can do, and how everybody can make an advantage. And that's really well-loved by the citizens. We get a lot of teachers in there who take that information back to the classroom. And on the right, you can see a picture of the climate action plan, and there's a link to that online as well, if you haven't spent any time with it. So, quick overview of some data. This is all the data we've collected since 2005. There's a lot up there. You can look over this at your own leisure. But what I'll say are the following two things. Since 2009, electricity down, community-wide, 9%. Okay? If you look at how that's split up, you can see residential, commercial, and industrial are all on the order of a third, although commercial's a little bit higher. So if we want to reduce that, there's no silver bullet. You've got to improve the industry. You've got to improve the residences. And you've got to improve commercial. And if the city is growing, that becomes hard, because if we grow all three of those sectors, we have to reduce the emissions at the same time. This next graph is the same graph, but it's natural gas instead of electricity. This is an increase. This might be slightly weather-related. This is 2019 data. We're always about a year behind, and 2020 is a funny data year, as we can all expect. So this is the last really good data we have, and we're continuing to collect this. So, community natural gas increased since 2005 about 9%. But you can see, within this, we've had a lot of years where natural gas has been down as well. Natural gas is a little bit more sensitive to weather-related changes due to heating. And here are vehicle miles traveled within the boundary of Roanoke. And you can see, this peaked kind of in 2010, and then it went down through 2014, and now it's starting to creep back up. So we have a small increase in the total number of miles people are driving within the community. And most of that, second graph in the middle there, shows that most of that is happening on secondary roads. Okay? The climate action plan says we want a 5% reduction, and we're up about 2.6% right now. So figuring out ways to get people out of cars is a big deal. So, this pulls all that data together, and it shows us, so that was just energy use. This is actually the carbon dioxide and other greenhouse gases, which are emitted as a result of burning fuels. And you can see here, since the new baseline in 2016, we're down another 7.2%. So the trend is in the right direction. Our goal is 10% by 2024, which is if we keep going. We're only a few years in, and we're three-quarters of the way to our goal already. So we are very likely, again, to hit a 10% reduction by 2024. And you can see where this is important. On the right-hand side, again, commercial, residential, and industrial are kind of all the same. Transportation's a big deal. And the biggest place to make a difference is electricity. Some highlights here, you can look at these in your own as well. In 2016, we saved over $650,000 in energy we didn't have to buy. So that's called avoided energy, due to better efficiency, trips not taken. Okay? Big overhauls of facilities at the Bergland Center, City Hall. The fleet has new electric car-share programs, propane for some of the equipment, lots of traffic signal updates to light-emitting diodes, which are 90% more efficient. So lots of great use at the city, and this is how the city gets these. Essentially, in the city, we're getting twice as much reduction as we're getting in the community at large, because you have more control over your purchases and your behaviors. So trying to translate some of that city progress to community-wide project is a key, but is also very hard, because we don't have control of the community as much. So, all of that is a retrospective look. And that's typically where this presentation has ended. But as Nell alluded to at the beginning, we want to spend just a couple of last minutes here talking about the future. So all of that is retrospective, and what we're concerned about is the future. So this is prospective. This is Climate View. It's a software based in Europe, working with major cities, as you can see here. And Roanoke is the only and first city that they've chosen to do a pilot with. So we've been working with them for the last month, just to show you guys some of the power of this software and what it can do. So this is what do we do going forward, not just where have we been and how have we been doing. This is an integrated climate management program. There's some, I'm going to go into the software itself, so I won't spend much time on this. I'll show you some of the highlights of what it can do, just to give you a feel. But it allows you to plan. It allows you to implement, and it allows you to manage. And since we have 15 years of data, we have a good starting point to do planning, management, and data. We know where we are and where we started, and now the question is, how do we get to our targets? It essentially starts with something called a digital twin, which some of you may have heard of. And if you haven't, it's essentially a model, considered a twin. It's a model of the city on your computer. And it models things like driving, and heating and cooling, and running your computers and your lights. And so it's a virtual model of your city, and it allows you to project what would happen if we did this thing differently, and what would happen if we did that thing differently. And the key is, cities never have enough time or resources to do all the things. You guys, every day, have to decide what is the right balance of this thing versus that thing. And this allows us to see, if I did this thing, how much benefit would I get, and how much would it cost us compared to doing that thing, which gives me a different amount of benefit, but also costs me a different amount. So this is a way to project into the future. And to do it today, what's going to happen five years from now? This shows some of the static graphs. I'm going to show you in just a minute these things in real time. It just shows us where we are and where we're going. And you can see different elements. On the bottom there, public transport, electric cars, remote working, eco-driving, improved efficiency. It allows you to explore each of these different options. That's a little small. You'll be able to see bigger in a second. And so what I want to do very quickly here is just show you a couple of things in real time, and then I'll conclude. So they've helped us build a digital twin. And we had to pick a starting goal. So we'll talk about this a bit more in the summary. But we picked a goal of cutting emissions by 50% by 2030. So that's much more aggressive than these 10% goals we've had in the past. You can see there are different categories: transportation, industry, agriculture, energy, and others. And if you click on this, you can see this gray bar here is where we are if we don't do anything. And this kind of turquoise bar is where we'd like to go for a 50% reduction. And you can look at how that would happen. You get some of it from transportation, some of it from building, some of it from energy systems. And for example, you can click on one of these, and you can see transportation breaks down into personal mobility and freight. If we click on personal mobility, you can see that that breaks down to replacing travel, changing the mode you use, like riding a bus, or reducing the impact of cars. And if I click on cars, this just keeps going. I can look at shifting to electric vehicles. I can look at better technology. So all of these options are in here, and they're in here at all these different levels. It shows me a model of where I am today and where I want to go. And it does that not just for the whole thing, but I can pick one of these, again, like transportation, and see what will happen in each sector. And I can go in, and even more impressive than that, I can set my own targets. So you can see, green targets are transportation, blue is industry, et cetera. You can set the targets. And then you can go in and quickly do something called balancing. So you can look at your target and say, what would happen if I changed the amount people walked and cycled? So in real time, you can change your targets and see what happens. What would happen if we increased the number of electric cars? So this is a real-time model that allows you to plan with the appropriate stakeholders within the city and without, to say, what if we did this? What if we did that? So that is a snapshot of, and a very brief snapshot of the power of what this can do. So in conclusion, the city is on track from its latest target, which is a 10% commitment by 2024. We're at 7.2% right now. All of the climate scientists essentially say, this is not good enough. We're going to have to do more. And in fact, many cities are targeting 50% reduction by 2030. And that's what we put in the model as a starting point. So it's a recommendation that the city comes up with a more aggressive target than this 10% target we've been going after. Because if we don't do that, we're going to have effects, especially disproportionately on the lower-income folks in the city. We have a software tool that's available. There are other ones as well, but they reached out to us. So I suggest some kind of modeling tool. Everything we've done in the past has been retrospective. We need something powerful to look prospectively into the future, and Climate View is a good example of that. And I just want to say, in past years, my work with the city has been wonderful. The city has been very supportive to get the good data, to help make the good decisions, to improve the future, which is not just the environment, but it's the health and the economic sustainability as well. It's all tied together. And if we don't do the environmental piece of it, it's going to come back to us in a number of ways. So I thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions you have now, and happy to answer more detailed questions in the future, if you just want to reach out to me. And big help from Nell and all the staff who have provided us with all this data.
I thank you for that report. I'll go with Mr. Jeffrey.
Thank you for the recording. I think it's important that we focus on greenhouse emissions. As we read in the media and across the country and across the world, that our world is being impacted severely. And I think we need to raise our priority level on this more than we in the past. My question is, how are we comparing, I know you gave a date on Roanoke, how are we comparing to other localities and their plans for reducing the greenhouse emissions?
So, most cities in Roanoke don't have any plans or any goals. There's probably, what would you say, seven to 10 cities in the whole state that have plans, places that have colleges, Arlington. So, there's only two or three published plans I've seen. In the past, we've been kind of on track, and Nell can correct me, because she deals very closely with a lot of cities and talks with them. We've been kind of on track with what people have done in the past. But only in the last year has this really shifted. People are saying, we got to make some changes. So the one I'm most aware of is Charlottesville. They just, their city council just passed 45% reduction by 2030. Okay? And the state is looking at, you know, big changes to the electrical grid and other things as well. And those things will all help us. We can't change easily what AEP does. But a lot of the changes we've seen already have come because the utilities are being forced to go to renewables as well. And all of that's going to help us. So if the state sets an aggressive target, and the utilities meet that, we're going to get that just by virtue of using the electricity. But we also, you know, need to go beyond. So I would say, our old plans were in line with what cities have done. And unless we up them, we're going to kind of be behind again. Nell, would you?
Yeah. I would say Richmond is doing some pretty progressive things. And so I would say, right now, they're probably, of cities closer to our size, they're probably in the lead. Northern Virginia, there are some pretty progressive things going on there. We're holding our own. But as Sean mentioned, they are upping their commitment and their investment in some of their climate mitigation strategies and adaptation strategies. So I think it's time for us to revisit that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. McGinnis, thank you so much for taking the time to go through that and making sure we understood it. I've had several conversations with Mr. Cowell, and that article that you mentioned about Charlottesville prompted me to reach out to Mr. Cowell. And he did inform me of some of the things that we are doing. And I had written down, you know, are we aggressive enough, when you said 10%. And you answered that question, no, we're not. And we're hoping to move to 50%. My question is about the intervention. I'm not sure if you're familiar with our crisis response. I'm sure you must be, if you're working with Nell. I just got that this morning. Did you send it, Mr. Cowell sent it to me this morning. We're doing a lot of stuff. But the problem is, or I see the issue is trying to get the community engagement. So we need to do some sort of campaign. Is there anything on here that you see that needs to be done differently, or we need to add to our climate crisis response that we have currently? Because we need to get everybody on board to tackle this.
Yeah, I'll defer a bit to Nell on this. We did have a list of things we've tried to do in the past, and some of those worked to different degrees. But we're at the point now that we've got to redouble kind of our efforts and start kind of fresh with some new ideas. And I think Nell probably can speak better to specific things.
So there's the community greenhouse gas emissions, which is what we're looking at here today. And those are generally driven by the electric company and how they source their fuel. So, you know, anything that we can do to move them to cleaner energy is a wonderful thing. But the municipal actual activities that we do is a separate report, and we don't do that as frequently, because it's actually a lot more labor-intensive and takes a lot more time to do it. So we haven't done one of those in a while. But a couple of things I think we could look at is encouraging solar and for our community. And we have a solarized Roanoke program going right now that I think is going pretty well, and we're pretty pleased with that. Also, the electric vehicles, you know, getting a good strategy together. As you know, we've looked at that, and we had a small committee put together, and they kind of came up with some recommendations, which I'll be sharing with Mr. Cowell here shortly. And I think- And I think, too, the citizen engagement part is very important. There's also a capacity issue. So, you know, we do the best that we can with what we have to work with. And we're working very hard on a green and healthy homes program that'll really target some of the low-income homes to really make a difference with LeadSafe and some of the healthcare providers in our community and Roanoke Gas, and also with, this is Office of Sustainability and TAP. So we have some good things in the hopper that I think can make a big difference. And if we could just, you know, really empower those programs and get those moving forward, I think that would be great. And then the outreach part is just so important to help people understand why it is we need to get these things done.
Yeah, I think that's the struggle, the outreach portion of it. And I apologize, Mr. Cowell, it was the article in Danville about them getting the, yeah, the solar. But it, it just really frustrates me because I, I've always, you know, advocated for, for green energy. Of course, you know that. Of course, my husband and you, y'all are good friends. I mean, we're just always concerned about our infrastructure. Are we getting ready for, for the EVs, you know? And so my conversation with Mrs. Cowell was that we need a, a more of a holistic approach because I'm always talking about EVs and solar. But, you know, like Mr. Cowell said in response to, to my concern is that we've got to talk about walking more, doing, there's a whole lot of things that we need to start doing. And I totally agree with him on that, but I'm just trying to figure out, how do we engage our community? I just don't think that we're doing enough. And maybe we are, and, and, and that's part of, you know, my education or my lack of. But I think we could be doing more here. And if there's something we need to be doing as a council, please share with us because I think most of us would like to see us moving forward a little bit more rapidly than, than we are, actually.
Well, I'd be happy to sort of work with the senior administrators, and we could kind of talk about what makes sense and, and share some more information and the, the overall strategy. We have a pretty good idea of where we're going, but honestly, it's, some of the climate data has just accelerated to a point where we just need to rethink some things. I think we have a good plan, and I think we have a good plan, but I think there is a next step that could take place.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all, as always, for your work. I had several questions. The, the first one was on, in reference to page three, and I really appreciate you bringing the heat mapping results today. One of the things that I've been curious about, I think we all have, is the, are the intersections between our high-density poverty areas, our socially vulnerable areas, our higher incidence of violence areas, and they all correspond directly with this heat mapping index. And, you know, we just launched a, a new framework for gun violence and really violence prevention and intervention in the city, and we're working on that. But there's such a direct correlation to the climate, to all these other factors. And I, I guess I'm just kind of talking out loud here, but I'd love to see a way that we can bring all of this information together and, and really show the community how one thing affects another thing, affects another thing, affects another thing. It's all interrelated. And I, I don't know how we can do that. I mean, seeing this climate software is incredible to me because it immediately makes me think, so if poverty reduction is something we want to do, how can we go in and project? You know, if we do this, how much will it affect here? If we want to do this preventative measure, intervention measure in reducing gun violence, what, what might that look like? And what can we do that's climate-based, that's clean energy-based, that can also reduce those other things? So I, I'm just looking for those connections and those points of intersection and, and hope that we can, can build that out. The second thing is, I, I think we all, several of us have probably been approached, but I, I've been talking with someone from Sustainable Roanoke recently about the city declaring a climate emergency. And I don't know if Charlottesville's done something like that, but more localities are looking into that, and that's certainly something we could do as a council. But I would like to see that if we do that, we incorporate these goals of, of having our, having our emissions by 2030 and, and having some very tangible ways that we can do that. So I'd, I'd love to see us do that.
Well, if you, if you call it an emergency, then you're called to do something.
Exactly.
And if you don't think we need to increase things higher than what we're doing now, then you really don't think it's an emergency. And we're either going to pay for it upfront, or we're going to pay for it down the line.
Well, and we can see the effects. I mean, you told us early on that, that we're kind of in a lockdown cycle right now. And the only way to change that is to take action and to, to increase the, the goals that we have for reducing these emissions. The, the last question I had was just really for my own understanding, and, because the other point of connection I see here is with transit. And we're, we're starting to make a transition to electric vehicles with the buses, but we also know that we have to have the infrastructure in place to do that for it to be truly effective. But I'm curious, when we talk about, you know, in some of the data you've pointed out that we're trying to get electricity, we're, we're trying to measure electricity reduction, but we're also trying to rely more on electricity as clean energy for fleet and other things. Can you help me understand the distinction?
So you have to do both. There's not a distinction.
Both at the same time.
If you just switch to an electric car, but you still burn coal to get it, you're actually not helping yourself out and maybe even hurting yourself. So while on an individual basis, we need more people switching to electric cars, and on a city basis, we need to move from gasoline and diesel to electric buses. We also need to be pushing the state and the utilities to clean up the grid and make it more renewable. Because if you don't do both things at the same time, you're not going to get anywhere. Now, in general, if you wait for one or the other, if you say, well, the infrastructure's not here, so we can't do it yet, by the time it comes, you'll have lost a lot of momentum. So we should be buying electric cars and transitioning to electric buses because we know the renewables have to come. And if we wait for them to come, we're going to be another five to 10 years behind, saying we don't have the infrastructure yet. Because buying the electric car already helps a little bit. It's just that when the utility doubles down, then we get even, you know, compounding benefits. But if you wait, in the time you're waiting for the electricity to get cleaner, you're still driving your dirty car, and you're just going backwards at the same time. So I would suggest you have to go in parallel. And anybody who can be an early adopter, whether it's a citizen or the, they need to get in, because it also drives the whole market forward, right? If nobody's buying solar panels and electric cars, then there's an economic incentive. Solar panels are getting cheaper and cheaper because the market is getting bigger and bigger. And the price of residential solar is down about 30% just from last year. And so all of these things are coupled, as you've, you know, pointed out here.
So one, one last comment, and I'll be finished. So is there, do you have recommendations on what we could advocate for in our legislative agenda as a city to encourage the state to clean up the grid?
So I will answer that question. We actually did put something into our legislative package. It was running a little bit behind just because of the way things worked out. But what we're asking for is a clean energy contract. And what that allows, it allows cities and other public authorities to reach net zero and aggressive carbon reduction goals. Because we could put solar panels across every building that we have, and that still really wouldn't zero out what our consumption is. So what this piece of legislation says is, a local government can buy solar from perhaps Danville, or, you know, maybe there's, we put a, a field up at the airport. We can buy it from them and get that environmental credit, and that's how you get to net zero. So we've worked with Blacksburg and some other communities in the state to put this legislation together to clarify that we're actually allowed to do that. And that's how Arlington got to their, you know, more aggressive goals, is they were able to buy, I think it was Google or Amazon, I can't remember which, but they needed to do that, so they were able to buy that environmental credit. So you're, it's a financial transaction. You're not actually getting that clean energy, but it's being produced someplace, and you actually buy that, that, that credit for that clean energy. So we are doing that. And also, I would say, we were very active in renegotiating the APCO contract this year, and they made a lot of changes that allow us to participate in the Virginia Clean Energy Act, which previously our contract wouldn't allow us to do the things that that piece of legislation gave us the opportunity to do. So that was a big move, too. So with that new contract, we have some new options for solar that are much more attractive for us as a local government.
Great. Thank you very much.
I thank you. Recognize Councilman Sanchez.
Good afternoon, and thank you for all the work you've done. I just have a question. Do you know about how much it costs to, to put solar panels on an average home?
Uh, solar panels on an average home, including, there's a 26% federal credit right now. The city gives you a small discount on your real estate taxes, and you get to sell the emission credits back. But I would say, on an average home, you're often limited by your roof size and the direction and any trees and other things. But I would say a ballpark number to get a reasonable amount of solar on your house is probably going to be after the tax credit that you get back, on the order of $10,000 to $1,2,000. Obviously, there's a big range from smaller houses to bigger houses.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just have one quick follow-up question. And I did go right to Solarize Roanoke. I was all excited and got my reject letter because of the neighborhood we're in, all of the trees, so planting trees.
Just like, trees are good.
Trees are good. Remember, you just said trees are good, but they're not good for, for what I was trying to do. But let me just ask this question, probably on Dr. McGinnis. Now, we know that the trucks and, and all the mid-sized vans that come up 581 and 460, they create a lot of our greenhouse gas. Is there anything that we're ever going to be able to do about that? Because they, and we're so close to both of them, the city, 460 and 581, but that's almost a losing battle.
It's a little bit of a losing battle, and some of these new regulations are going to help as we have, if you support these CAFE standards for, for cars to be more efficient, that's going to help as we go forward. But surprisingly, if you look here on the middle graph at the bottom, the interstate, even though you think of all these trucks and stuff going through, it's about 1, 1.2% of all the emissions.
So it's, so it's mostly us, isn't it?
So it's, I mean, people always want to say, oh, it's Amazon driving in and doing that, and that's a role. But the individual actions of all of us doing our individual driving is a huge impact compared to that. And it doesn't mean we don't need to push the big freight companies to do their share and even do more. But, you know, people often will say, oh, it's the people jetting off to Hawaii, it's all that. It's actually everyday people doing everyday things that just because of the size of the population, it adds up.
Okay, that was my thinking. I was trying to blame the trucks coming through Roanoke, but that's not it.
Yeah, the interstate has, it looks like, almost 20% of the road miles, but only 1% of the emissions.
The emissions, okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate you both.
Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you both. How is that working out, the buses in Blacksburg? Is that, is that going pretty well?
More, more specific on?
The electric, the EVs.
The electric buses in Blacksburg. I think they're fine, but I don't, I, I don't have a good sense. I don't know if you've talked to the infrastructure that they had to set up to make that work.
I can, I can.
But I could, I can certainly find that out.
I, I was just talking with our general manager at Valley Metro today about that. And the, the challenge with electric vehicles is making sure you have the infrastructure in place. So part of the, you know, to get three electric buses, that really, three electric buses can take the place of one diesel bus in terms of the charging available. So, for example, we have a 15-hour service day in Roanoke, but the current charge for an electric bus is eight hours. So you essentially.
How much do you get a supercharger?
Well, you could get a supercharger, but it's infrastructure. So you got, that's.
That's why I keep saying infrastructure.
Yeah, so that's why the infrastructure is so critical. And, and to your point, that you have to do these things in parallel. So you can't completely replace the fleet if you don't have the infrastructure in place to handle it. So that's.
And, and the point we should really.
That's where Blacksburg is.
The point on the new transit center that we're building is that even if the electric buses aren't here yet, you've got a plan for the infrastructure to have electric connections ready to go. Because if you don't, the retrofit will cost you three times as much as, I mean, I know it's extra money that you have to figure out where it comes from, but to do it while they're building it is so much cheaper than waiting and saying, oh, yeah, and then we're going to need electrical connections. So you put them in even before you need them, or at least the capacity, the wires and the...
And it is built for that.
And, and right, because I remember talking to Mr. Cowell at least three years ago about that, and he said yes, because I asked that question.
And I would say the same for solar. Even if you don't have the money to put the solar on, you get it solar-ready so that it's, it's ready to go. And when the solar can be affordable, it plugs right in. You don't have to redo the electrical system again in two years or something.
Yeah, I think one of the other, you know, when it comes to buses, one of the other complications, as we've talked about, is the funding mechanisms that's used, that are used for the buses, since we use FTA funding, and FTA is pretty particular about the durability they expect for the existing buses. And so even in the cases of Blacksburg, I think Lynchburg is also moving to some degree toward electric, and as are we. It's going to take much longer, I think, than most people would prefer for that fleet to turn over, just because of the funding mechanisms that are in place. Unless, like what is in the infrastructure bill, there's other dollars that come into play that are beyond the FTA formula funding. So that, that's going to drive a lot of how quick a lot of these things are actually able to come into play, is how quick that funding actually ramps up outside of the normal sort of funding model that they use as they go forward. And, and we will, for, for council members, this, this discussion that we're having here is going to be a part of your strategic planning retreat. Because what you've, what's talked about here and what has been talked about with some of you as well, or has shared with me, is, in this case, beyond the current, has, has been exhibited. This is beyond our current strategy, beyond our current target. And so that's the place that we'll have this conversation, because of course, we also have to balance it understandably against all of the other things we want to do beyond that. But that's where we'll have further part of this discussion, to kind of determine where is the right path for us to, to move forward, not only on this topic, but also on all the other areas and stuff as well. And I probably have some offline questions to ask. I always have questions about sort of localized, as was mentioned, we're a small piece of all of Virginia, and Virginia itself is a small piece of all of the country that's taking these steps. And each of these individual steps local come with costs, which is no problem. But also, I think we need to talk more about what the benefit is that we derive from that cost if we continue, and I'm not saying we will, but if we continue to act in isolation. And that's where some of the legislative agenda items come into play, which is, some of this has to be driven at the state and federal level. Otherwise, your local actions will really result only in costs because increased in changing weather patterns, increases in flooding will not be affected by Roanoke acting alone. It really depends on those, really frankly, global action, but at least national actions as we, as we move forward. So that'll be a part of some things that I want to talk as we lead into the retreat discussion as well and stuff.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you both for your.
And, and as, as I said before, please reach out if you have questions afterward. It's a lot of information. There's a lot of technical details. Happy to answer questions at any point.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to definitely thank Dr. McGinnis because obviously, as much as we're able to do here to kind of affect some of the changes, we couldn't really do it without this technical assistance that really creates the data points and the evidence in what we're doing, which helps shape that. So very much appreciate the partnership we have with, with Sean and with his, his group as well, so.
All right. Thank you. With that item recommended for action, and item number one is acceptance of the fiscal year 2022 Virginia Domestic Violence Victims Fund grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Domestic Violence Victim Fund grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right. Are there any comments or questions, discussions for members of council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just because it was actually, I had misspoken on the previous grant item, and it was actually this grant item that I was wanting to make reference to, and that there has been a change in the funding approach with this particular item in that the, where we used to rely exclusively on grant funding to support this position, the, for a variety of reasons, the state has actually started to pull back on the grant funding that's going to these. And so in order to continue to fund this very critical position and this effort, the city is making up the difference between those. But I do think that as we have further discussions with our legislative members, we probably I do think that as we have further discussions with our legislative members, we probably ought to talk about this, and ultimately, where the state's commitment is on these types of grants, because in many places, they would not be able to do what we're doing, which is to kind of plug that funding gap. They would simply walk away from these efforts because they don't have them adequately grant-funded. So, and I associated that with the previous grant, when it's really this grant. Thank you.
You know, I'm surprised, there's been a, I'm sure there's been an increase in domestic violence in our communities, beginning with the pandemic and and most recently, there's been a lot of stress on families, difficult and things. So I agree, this should be something we should talk about in our meeting with the legislators. Any other comments or discussion on this resolution? All right, I see none. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, can you read the title, please?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the Virginia Sexual and Domestic Violence Victim Fund Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion, comments from members of the council? I hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. All right, we're down now to comments, and from our city manager, and I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Cowell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few items. Want to draw your attention, of course, as the mayor and vice mayor are aware, the advisory panel for the Star City Strong effort has been meeting, has now concluded three meetings, and will be on Wednesday having its fourth meeting, and so it is progressing. Anticipate by the end of the month that we'll have the public hearing. So in the next week or so, we'll begin scheduling and promoting that public hearing. That will predominantly be in response to the preliminary recommendations that the group is working toward. Of course, all of those meetings are available, and you can view those if you wish, although some of them, I have to caution, folks are not the most exciting, because they break into small groups and go into quiet discussions. So there's not a lot of, not a lot of action on that, on those, on those videos and stuff. But certainly encourage folks to watch what, as we progress toward the end, the expectation is still that by your second meeting in September, we'll be here with the group making recommendations on the funding and how that will move forward. Also wanted to draw your attention to, if you came down the hallway, you saw the work is beginning on it already, but we are working through a rework on the hallway coming into the building to introduce a bit of a more welcoming and diverse environment, and this is in part, in partnership with the Arts Commission, and as a part of that, the Arts Commission is seeking exhibition-ready art for the Welcome to Roanoke exhibition, which will be out there. Submissions are from artists of all ages, backgrounds, and experience levels. It will be a 10-month exhibit from September 10th of this year, which coincides with Welcoming Week to June 30th of next year. In the 10-month exhibit, the exhibit, the art, the concept of art out there reflecting the diversity in our community is permanent, but there'll be pieces of it that rotate. So this piece is the piece that will rotate, the 10-month portion, and again, the art will be displayed out there. It will be curated by members of the Roanoke Arts Commission Collections Committee, and the deadline to submit an entry is on Tuesday, August 31st, and that information is available on the city's website. It's out on the Roanoke Arts Commission Facebook page and a number of other avenues as well. So certainly encourage anyone that feels that they have any kind of artistic ability to take a look at that call for items and see if they would be interested in joining in this effort of celebrating again our diversity, and would encourage that as well. And then finally, of course, the Go Outside Festival, or the Go Fest, you're all quite familiar with, and was scaled back significantly last year because of the COVID as well. This year, they're ramping it back up. Hopefully, everything will settle down some with COVID this year to be able to make it a success as it has been in the past. It is the 10th anniversary of the festival, and in recognition of two things, really, of the 10th anniversary, as well as an effort to try to help bolster the small businesses located in downtown. Go Fest will actually be relocating this year, so it will actually be held throughout downtown, and there'll be a lot more information about how this will work, but the event will take place October 15th through 17th. Of course, the event is a joint effort between the Roanoke Outside Foundation and the City of Roanoke's Parks and Recreation Department and Downtown Roanoke, Inc. Basically, it will span from Elmwood Park down to the City Market Building. There'll be several streets closed as a result of the event that will allow space for vendors. Many of the shows that you've become accustomed to seeing at the Go Fest, other activities, live music, and so on. And again, this is in part to continue to highlight, of course, at its core, it's to highlight all of the outdoor activities that are available throughout Virginia's Blue Ridge, but also is an opportunity to help support the local businesses here in downtown. So hopefully, it will all work out well, and we'll have a win-win as we move forward with that, and just wanted to, it's a little, a little ways off, but we wanted to start kind of generating some interest in activity around it as well. So those are my items. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell. Let me just say, regarding the Star City Strong meeting that we have, you all can follow that on Wednesday nights at 6 o'clock. I've been impressed with the ideas that are coming from the group. The vice mayor and I are chair, head chair and co-chair of that group, and last week, the city manager had me get in with the group, and.
Put it to work.
Yeah, and it kind of, there's not a lot of people willing to work with me, as I thought. Some folks raised their hands, and we got together, and I think we did a good job. But there are, there's a lot of ideas that are coming from our citizens, and I'm impressed with that. And I think we'll go at it again this Wednesday night, and so, but I encourage you to listen, because some of those things will probably be coming to us. But people have some ideas and some thoughts about how we should spend this money and those kinds of things. So if you get a chance, tune in, if not for a few minutes. Our city manager's a hard taskmaster. He's not letting us get away with much down there.
It's a, it's a good group, but we're going to spend our two hours in there every time, right?
So, but I think I'm very pleased, and I want to thank those citizens who have volunteered their time to come down and be a part of this, and I think it's going very well.
Is it the same venue, Mayor?
No, this, this time, thank you for asking. It will be in our third venue. We keep kind of moving around. It will be back at the Burgland Civic Center, but it will actually be in the lobby area of the Special Events Center, so that portion that kind of serves as the lobby. There's actually convocation and a couple of other things going on that same evening elsewhere, but it'll be at the city.
Yeah, I wondered about that. That's why I was wondering. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sure.
We'll get that out.
And I've been impressed with the turnout. I mean, people are coming, it's just not.
Yeah, essentially, we've had all of the members of the 40, more or less, attend every one of the meetings, so.
So it's a very serious endeavor, and I'm pleased with the commitment that citizens are making. All right. We're now down to item eight, which is reports of committees. A report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donald Caldwell, Director of Accounting, is the spokesperson. And there's a budget ordinance.
Budget ordinance?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title, paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal and private grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. All right, item number B is a report of certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions in which city council serves as liaison or appointee. Are there any comments by members of council?
I have one.
Who's that? All right, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, just for the public, do a PSA real quick on three items through the Housing Authority. And one of them is that on Thursday, August 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the Section 3 program is partnering with Virginia Western Career, School of Career Training to have a Fall 2021 Meet and Greet. Residents and the community are invited to learn more about the different career training programs that are available through Virginia Western. The second one is the Roanoke Division Center at the Housing Authority is going to host a homeownership class in partnership with TAP, and that's open to the public as well, and that's going to be Wednesday, August 18th, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Housing Authority's main office. And last is my favorite, is the, that Roanoke Redevelopment Housing is partnering with TAP to help with rental relief applications, and that is for the Housing Authority families to apply, and it gives dates for them to apply. Intake hours is nine to 12, and one to three at various locations. One is Friday, August 20th, at Indian Rock Village, Monday, August 23rd, at Hunt Manor, Tuesday, August 24th, at Bluestone Park, and Wednesday at Morningside, Wednesday, August 25th, at Morningside Manor. Also, I would ask, and I hate to put the manager on the spot, but since the governor has extended the moratorium, could you speak on that for the public as well, so that they, that the public itself and the community will be aware that money is available?
Yes, so there, not only has the moratorium been extended here locally, at the state level, of course, at the federal level for a shorter period of time, but additionally, there was, in addition to the already available federal funding that had come in to address any kind of eviction avoidance and those kinds of things, there was some, out of the special session, there was some additional money placed in that, in that fund as well at the state level. So the, the good and the bad, the short answer is there is an abundance, there's a lot of, there are a lot of funds available for both landlords and renters that are seeking to address issues around the avoiding eviction. One of the challenges is, as we've talked previously in a couple of cases, is the longer that the moratorium lasts, the harder some of those sources are to tap into. So an example is, we have funding that actually is intended to avoid homelessness, but until you actually are notified that you are going to be evicted, those dollars are not available. So there's more money, and then there's other money, though, that's a little bit more difficult to, to connect with. Right now, your, your best source probably is to contact, certainly TAP, as well as, I believe that 211 is also functioning kind of as a pass-through with information, and certainly our community development folks here can connect you with those as well. The program's actually being run out of the state for the most part, but all of those folks know how to kind of connect into that program as well. So quite a bit of, quite a bit of funds out there still. Nearly, by the time it's all done, there's nearly a billion dollars available here in Virginia to try to assist in those rental payments.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good information.
Could you, Ms. Moon Reynolds, could you send us through email some of those dates that you mentioned that things are happening?
Yes.
So I can have that, well, send it to council.
Okay.
So we all can be aware of what's going on.
I'll share with the clerk, and she can forward to you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cowell?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. Several things happening Saturday of this week. The Groceries Not Guns Gun Buyback Event will be from 11:00 to 3:00 at 401 Gainesboro, which is the Lawson Building. Semi-automatic handguns can be exchanged for 250 in grocery carts. Shotguns, rifles, and revolvers can be exchanged for 150. Gun locks will also be distributed. All firearms should be brought in a closed box or similar container to the event, and they will be checked by event staff for safety and to determine the gift card amount. That same day, from 11:00 to 4:00, the, one of the mini-grants that came through the commission is an event sponsored by Building Bridges Over Barriers and the Roanoke Sigmas. It's united and rising together. No guns, just fun, at Forest Park Academy. That will be from 11:00 to 4:00. And that morning, from 9:00 to noon, is the Roanoke City Public Schools Back-to-School Extravaganza at Patrick Henry. And as part of that effort, they will be distributing the Locked Guns Save Kids Letter and Pledge, which will also subsequently go out in the back-to-school packets. So that's another educational piece that we're partnering with Roanoke City Schools on. The last thing is that we, we have three job opportunities in the city through the state grant that we received, a youth and gang violence prevention coordinator, and two youth and gang violence prevention outreach workers, and I believe the deadline to apply for those is tomorrow at 5:00. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you, and thank you for the work that that group is doing, Mr. Cowell, and and let me encourage people to come down and bring that gun you got, get groceries, get, get some food. Bring that gun you got sitting around there, and we know, for the most part, there's quite a few people that have them, so we think it's important, and thank you. It'll benefit you if you turn that gun in. Let me just say something at this point about the issue that I brought up last week, and I talked about vaccinations, and I talked with our city manager, and we had a good, good discussion on that, and, you know, my proposal, or idea was that I'd like to make it mandatory that we get vaccinations, but we're not there at this time, and especially, I think we'll have to watch and see where the governor's headed with this. But let me just say to all of our citizens out here, the most important thing that you can do if you have not been vaccinated is to get that shot, to get that shot. You don't have to look far on the news every afternoon, and you're seeing in many of the states, especially southern states, that are having tremendous problems with vaccinations and the lack of vaccinations, and and some say, well, that doesn't have anything to do with me, and they're in situations where you can't even go to the hospitals. You can't have regular surgeries because they're so inundated with people who have COVID because they did not, did not get the vaccination. And please, don't think that that's over there, and it doesn't happen here, because it is. We haven't gotten an alert or anything yet from our hospitals here, but that's what you are playing with. You're playing with your lives, the lives of your children. This virus is affecting young people. We're seeing young people die across this country and in this state. Down in Norfolk, I think it was, there's a five-year-old kid that died. So get vaccinated. That's, if you haven't been vaccinated, that's the most important thing you can do. I'm just disappointed that it has gone into the political arena. It's almost as though if you're a red area, you don't take it, or you don't do it, and if you're blue, you go ahead and do it, which is nonsense. This is about life, and, and I know this council supports me in this standpoint, that they don't want to see anybody, anybody in our community die as a result of COVID-19. And I tell you, what Donald means, I prepare, and the staff is helping me prepare for our State of the City's address, and I'm looking at the things, because we're going to focus a lot on recovery, but boy, we're about close to back where we were the way this thing is happening. I, I, I just think, you know, really, we've got to make sure that, that we do the things that we can do. And so I'm pleading with you. And so I'm pleading with you to get vaccinated for your family, for yourself, your family, and your children. And that's the thing that really concerned me is the children and younger people are being affected by this virus. And in certain cases, there have been breakthroughs, people who've gotten both shots, Viper and others have gotten the breakthrough, but it doesn't harm you as much as it normally would. But you're looking at people from their hospital beds are saying, if I had have got this shot, if I could do it again, I would get that vaccination. So this is nothing to be kidding around with or trying to play political football with. Get the shot. And there are ample places in Roanoke that you can get that. But please, the state has gotten better. We're doing better. We can improve our numbers here in Roanoke. We can improve our numbers here in Roanoke. And so we want to keep doing some things. We've been reaching out and even in Hispanic and Latino communities. We're talking, pushing, encouraging people to get the shots. We'll give you a ride. We'll do all that we can do, but you have to take the shot, you know? So it's serious. This is serious and we're at a serious place in this country and in this state. And so please, please, get vaccinated. All right, and we'll be coming back. We'll be talking about this and, and the city manager gives us the updates of what's going on in, in our part of the state. And I'm just not encouraged a lot by the numbers I see. And so it's up to you. We want to save lives. All right? Okay, is that, are there any more comments by members of council on boards and commissions and authorities? All right, number nine is unfinished business. Number 10 is, out of number 10 is introduction consideration of ordinances and resolutions. And are there any walk-on items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is one walk-on item. A resolution supporting the proposed American Rescue Plan funding for Virginia tourism destinations.
Okay.
I believe each member of council has a copy of that resolution that we dialed.
All right. And, Mr. Mayor, I can give you a little bit more clarification, and I apologize that it's being done as a walk-on because there was some confusion in our conversation with Virginia's Blue Ridge as to when they needed this item. It originated actually during the special session. The governor, or the General Assembly and the governor has since ratified the establishment of the Virginia Tourism Corp, the Virginia Tourism Recovery Program through the Virginia Tourism Corporation, where they're, they're allocating $50 million of the ARPA funding into that pool, which Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge certainly strongly supports. That will be used to aid in marketing and raising awareness of the tourism industry here in Virginia into markets that generally come into Virginia in an effort to recover what has been lost within that industry. However, one of the concerns that Virginia's Blue Ridge has expressed, and that's what really drove this, is we are one of the few regional management organizations for tourism. So we actually have five different municipalities represented within Virginia's Blue Ridge. And the way this allocation is being given, it's being given to individual entities that have been formed in that capacity. So even though Virginia's Blue Ridge represents five communities, in terms of the allocation, it's treated as a single entity, whereas other communities that have not actually taken the steps to approach tourism regionally may have multiple communities receiving that. So they're just simply raising concerns through this. Potatuck County, Roanoke County, and Salem have all already approved this resolution as well. We're kind of the last ones in line with this. And it is simply to encourage the, the governor as well as Virginia Transportation, or Virginia Tourism Corporation, to evaluate that methodology to take into consideration these regional entities, which there aren't many of, but these regional entities in the formula. That's, that's why it's there for you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so there is a resolution to support the proposed American Rescue Plan funding for Virginia tourism destinations. I need a motion.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution supporting the proposed American Rescue Plan funding for Virginia tourism destinations.
All right, any discussion among members of council? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. All right, item number 11 is motion to miscellaneous business inquiry of results or comments by the mayor or members of city council. Anything that anybody has in miscellaneous items? All right. Vacants on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. It's been requested that council make the following appointments from the floor, and the majority of council agreed that it was okay to, to do so at this meeting. So I'm going to call on Councilmember Cobb to place names in nomination and ask him to do that. And as he goes through that and concludes, we're going to, I'll ask Clerk to call the roll and we'll vote all nominee that we're in favor of that. So, Mr. Cal, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I nominate Mark Nelson to fill the unexpired term of Office of Robert Ledger as a city representative to the Virginia's First Regional Industrial Facility Authority in a term ending June 30, 2022. I nominate Mark Nelson to fill the unexpired term of Office of Robert Ledger as a city representative to the Western Virginia's Regional Industrial Facility Authority ending February 3, 2024. And I nominate Elda Stanko Downey to fill the unexpired term of Office of Shaleen Powell as a city representative to the Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge ending June 30, 2022.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
And if you're in, if everybody's in agreement, please vote all nominees. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
All nominees.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
All nominees.
Mr. Cobb.
All nominees.
Mr. Jeffrey.
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee.
All nominees. Thank you. And council will go into recess, foreclose meetings, and we'll reconvene at 7:00 here in the council chamber. Thank you.